Oh, good for him.
Yeah, he works in the HR department at AAM.
We'd like to call to order the February 13th meeting of the Shelby Township Planning Commission. I'll ask the Secretary to call the role, please.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Mr. Meredith is absent. Ms. Baker?
Here.
Ms. Cassali is absent. Mr. Turner is absent. Mr. Appone?
Here.
Mr. Loray?
Here.
Chairman Moffett, we have a quorum.
Great, thank you. And let me begin by offering my condolences to our newest member. She will soon decide, no, figure that this is a rough bunch to be associated with. Good welcome, Lisa. Next is approve of the agenda.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next, approval of the minutes from January 23rd?
So move.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. For substantive items this evening, the first being site plan number 14-01, Ahmad Potres with Future Design. Name and address, and then when you're done speaking, if you, anyone, this goes for anyone that wants to come up and address the body, name and address, and then sign in when you're done. Okay?
Ahmad Potres with the Futuristic Design Consultant, 520 East 12 Mile Road, Medicine Heights. And we're here for the extension for site plan for the 3,000 Auburn Road, the proposed banquet.
So what's the ETA?
We, the building department has already approved everything, so just because the site plan expires, so we need to move on and is ready.
So should this body grant the extension when you guys get to work?
Yes, yes. I mean, when?
Yeah.
We'll start working by April.
Okay, very good. Planner?
Thank you, Mr. Moffett. I just wanted to note that this is actually a reinstatement of the site plan because the site plan actually expired in 2021. The latest modification and extension was approved in 2019, so, but other than that, I don't have any objections to the extension as the zoning ordinance has not changed since then, so everything that is on the site plans is consistent with the current zoning ordinance.
Okay. I mean, we, you know, having approved it a couple of times?
Yes.
The community's looking forward to it because it, you know, would make a nice addition to that area, so.
Absolutely.
Please encourage your client to.
Yeah, absolutely. He's very eager.
Excellent. Is there any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Moore?
Oh, I move to reinstate site plan number 14-01 for Darren Zabari for Babylonia Restaurant and Banquet Hall, 3,000 Auburn Road, parcel number 23-07-31-201-029, located on the south side of Auburn Road between Ryan Road and Dequinder. The applicant must submit a complete set of site plans, including the building elevations.
Support.
Moved by Moore, support by, was that Appone? Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Appone?
Yes.
Commissioner Loray?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Yes, sorry.
Into the mic.
Yes.
There you go. Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, good luck.
Thank you.
Next item, site plan 22-41, Richard Detkowski for JLR Group. Tell you what, do you want to tee this off, or?
He's ready.
All right, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
Larry Nichols, Armstrong Miller Nichols, 5412 East China, Michigan. Just addressing what we brought to the floor last time, I can run through the list of these items. We've modified each one or made changes to each items that the planner noted last time. The benchmarks are located on the site plan. The exterior walls have been changed, partially changed to masonry block to meet the code. We provided 45 parking spaces just by reconfiguring the way we were parking in that lot. The photometric plan was revised. No outdoor storage was noted. Rooftop equipment will be screened was noted, if there is any there won't. I don't believe there'll be any in this building. Existing handicap spaces were relocated. The south wall of the new building will be fire rated and will partially be fire rated just because we changed that to masonry to start with, so we're off to good there. And existing storm and sewer was rerouted under the building. And all dimensions on the handicap spaces were noted. Those are all the changes that were on the last plan.
Planner?
Thank you, Mr. Moffett. So, yes, most of those items were already taken care of. The only issue from the planning department review back in January 9th when we had this meeting, we had asked the applicant to include brick on the building and that was the major revision on this site plan. So he had revised the plans to include that and met all the requirements.
Okay, thank you. To the board, any questions for the petitioner? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Snyder?
Move to approve site plan 22-41, Richard Detkowski for JLR Group on behalf of Tucker Induction Systems Incorporated for the property located at 50550 Rizzo Drive, parcel number 23-07-24-126-031, south of 23 Mile, east of Shana Road for Warehouse Edition. Approval is contingent upon the submission of final site plans addressing all departmental and planning commission review comments.
Support.
Moved by Snyder, support by Loray. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Loray?
Yes.
Commissioner Appone?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
And the Chair of the Chats. Good luck. Next item is site plan special land use application number 22-026 for Angelo Olani. This is a public hearing, so I'll ask the Secretary to read the notice as it was published.
Charter Township of Shelby, notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the planning commission for the Charter Township of Shelby, Macomb County, Michigan, has received a request for approval of the following site plan special land use. Applicant Angelo Olani, Corridor Cove LLC, 51515, Corridor Drive, Shelby Township, Michigan, 48315. Proposed use is concrete batch plant with outdoor storage. Location vacant parcel south of 24 Mile Road, east of Shelby Parkway. Site plan number SLU 22-26, Sidwell number 23-07-14-100-062. Legal description is as follows. Planning Commission will meet on Monday, February 13th, 2023, at 7:00 PM in the Shelby Municipal Building, 52700 Van Dyke, Shelby Township, Michigan, 5867267243, for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the site plan special land use. The application for the site plan special land use may be examined at the Planning and Zoning Department in the municipal building Monday through Friday from May 30 AM to 5:00 PM. Written comments may be submitted to the planning commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act 110 of 2006 as amended. Shelby Township Planning Commission, Jerome Moffett, Chair, Raquel Moore, Secretary. This was published in the Shelby Utica News on January 25th, 2023. There were 11 property owners and two applicants were notified by first-class mail on January 24th, 2023.
Thank you. Mr. Kirk, did the publication meet all legal requirements?
Yes, it did.
Okay. And then can you explain the uses under the present zoning and whether the special land use request is appropriate?
Under the present zoning, it's light manufacturing. That's a manufacturing district where there's not any external effects on adjoining properties, so it's a light manufacturing use. However, the uses that they're requesting with regard to outdoor storage require a special land use in that district.
Okay, thank you. Did we receive any correspondence on this?
No, we did not, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. So the format for the public hearing will be as follows. The petitioner will come up, state their reason, what they're requesting and their reasons for it. I'll then bring it back to the board for the commissioners to offer any comments or ask their questions. I'll then open up to the public, so anyone from the community can either state an opinion or ask a question to the board. I will then take those questions, bring the petitioner back up to answer them. It's not a debate. With that, I will ask the petitioner or representative to identify themselves. And again, when you're done speaking, if you can sign in after.
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
If you could maybe turn that mic up a little, just, there you go.
Okay, can you hear?
Yep.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission. My name is Tom Kalas. That's K-A-L-A-S. The address is 51515 Corridor, Shelby Township. I'm here representing the petitioner, Corridor Cove LLC. Also with me this evening are the principals of Corridor Cove, Mr. Angelo Olani, his son Angelo Jr., and their operations individual, Orlando, to answer any questions you may have. We're here this evening seeking site plan approval for a batch plant, temporary batch plant that currently exists on the site. We'd like to make it a permanent use. We have a temporary use for it right now. That use expires, I believe, in March of this year, 2023. Under your ordinance, we're only allowed 24 months for temporary uses, so at this point, it's our intention to make that use a permanent use. And this, in actuality, is a extension of the Florence Cement existing site. This is an abiding piece of property. It's under common control and ownership with the owners of Florence Cement. We are seeking the site plan approval. We did receive AW's comments, which I've addressed each one individually. I did submit an email, I believe, Thursday of last week. I don't know if it's in your packet or not. I do believe it was put in there. We also submitted revised site plans addressing the AW comments, which were delivered to the township on Friday, but I don't believe those are in your packet and not under consideration at this time. I understand you're considering the initial site plan that was submitted, so this is a use that's permitted. It will have some outdoor storage of materials, some trucks used for the operations. That's the special land use requirement. We do meet, in our opinion, the ordinance requirements. There are some issues relative to some site plan considerations that we've attempted to address in our letter, to the extent there are any other site plan considerations. We're here this evening to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
To the planner, did we, did we receive answers to these questions? Are they in the packet?
They should be partly in your packet. The issue was, we didn't want to include everything because the original site plan that was submitted, and then the review was done on the original site plan that was submitted. What happened was the applicant then took the engineer's review, revised the site plan on Thursday, and wanted to submit it back to us while the packets had already gone out. So I didn't want to confuse the commission by adding more information that wasn't particular to the plans that you had already received.
All right, so we're not looking at what the, what the petitioner is proposing?
No, you are. You are looking at it.
So the site, so the, this, this site plan, this site plan is?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I thought you said they recent, all right. Okay, thank you. So an exit, so you're exiting out to 24 Mile Road?
Correct.
That's just to continue. See, now, we have been, it has been communicated to us that the township has gotten several complaints from, from folks in that neighborhood for the nuisance that that has created. And I, I mean, and that's understandable. As I sort of view this, I mean, if there was a way to move this, again, sort of more, more opinion than even question, again, there are certain aspects of this that are, that are allowed. And frankly, it existed, that use existed before a lot of those neighborhoods had come up, but that was more along 23 Mile. And so whatever changes and things that have come to this body, I mean, have it had an issue to support it, this seems like it's starting to encroach into an area of the township that's more residential in flavor, and it's going to impact those, those neighborhoods, those subdivisions around that. So that, I would have, I guess, causes me more pause to, to approve a more aggressive use for that property than the township would have envisioned. So I'm going to turn it to my, so there'll be some additional questions, and I'm really curious to hear the planners, our planners, the planners' comments on this. To the board, are there any questions or comments? No? Okay. Mr. Kalas, you can sit down for, for a second.
Thank you.
We'll bring you back up.
And we'll respond to your questions and comments. Thank you.
Okay. So this is the only public hearing the planning commission will hold on this special land use request. All remarks will be entered into the record for Township Board evaluation. We are recommending body, and the Township Board will evaluate our recommendation and make the ultimate decision, final decision on this request. At this point, anyone from the public is free to come up and offer any questions or comments. Go on once, go on twice. Okay, bring it back to the board. I'll ask the planner for her review.
Thank you, Chairman Moffett. I'm going to go through some of my comments. First of all, as Mr. Kirk indicated, this is a special land use requirement in the light manufacturing district because the operation of this, this use is primarily outdoors. The very first issue is the major two screening that's required. The ITC corridor is zoned R1, R1B, which is single-family residential, so major two screening is required between the light manufacturing district and the single-family district, which is the ITC corridor there. The drainage and sidewalk work along 24 Mile was never completed for this site, so this might be, this might fall on the developer itself, so we have to get that rectified before we can approve anything else. Section 4.53 strictly prohibits the storage of loose materials, soil, stone, sand, gravel, coal, and cinders, and similar materials in this district. And then, as Mr., I did not know, my previous conversations with, with the developer was that he would utilize the driveway off of 23 Mile to his existing, to his existing plant. He, he indicated to me that they would not use the 24 Mile exit, so that's another thing I would concur with you in that we, 24 Mile Road does not have the capacity to handle this such as these, these gravel trains and everything that's coming in and out of there. Matter of fact, if you recall previously, a few years ago, the developer of this site wanted to do outdoor truck parking and storage at this, at the site to the west or to the east, and we did, we denied it. The planning commission denied it. So I would strictly prohibit any, any ingress and egress off of 24 Mile and use this site to the south. So in addition to some of those comments, I know that the engineers' comments have not all been addressed, so I think it's premature at this time to grant any approvals for this use until we can thoroughly go through all these issues that were outlined in the planning commission comments in review.
Okay, thank you. So that's the petitioner to come back up. So where are we at with access to 24, 23?
Well, it is, it's a road that's available. Access is provided. It's up to the petitioner or the applicant as to how.
Who communicated to the planner that, you didn't communicate, who communicated to you that 20, that they were going to go to 23?
Yeah, we had, had that discussion with Mr. Olani.
Oh, okay.
Yes. But it, the road, there's no restrictions on using that road for access, but it's obviously something we're willing to look at. As far as the screening, we provide for actually a six-foot-high concrete panel wall on the interior of the property. We also provide for a six-foot-high chain-link fence with the screening vinyl panels. So we've got some berming on the site. We've got, the site itself is permeable. As far as, I know there is a concern with infiltration of, of materials, the storage that's totally enclosed and meets the ordinance. We did receive the planner's comments this evening, and we're more than happy to address them and table this matter if we have to and come back after we've addressed all the comments for additional review.
So you produced this, how you were screening, how you were going to screen the site?
It's on the site plan.
It is on?
It's the, yes, there's a concrete wall, but the berm, there's also a berm, but it's, the berm is on the ITC corridor. It's not, it's not on this property.
Okay.
There's, yeah, and the ITC has given us permission to, to do our, you know, to approve our, or do our site plans, so, with some conditions that we've submitted to the planning commission.
So we'll, Chairman, we'll, we'll need that information from ITC as well, allowing you to encroach into their easements.
I did provide their letter. Did you receive it, Julie? Their approval letter with the conditions, yeah. Okay. If not, we'll, we'll provide another copy, no issue.
We've not seen it, so.
These, these special land use standards have not been addressed either, so we'll need that as well.
Sure.
Okay. All right, thank you. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So our recommendation this evening must be based on the following standards: compatibility with adjacent land uses, consistent with and promote the intent and purpose of the special land use, compatibility with the natural environment, consistent with the capacities of public services and facilities affected by the proposed use, protect the public health, safety, and welfare, and the adequacy of public access to the site. We may recommend approval, disapprove of the request, or table it to evaluate the information further. Having said that, I'll, if there are no other questions, I'll entertain a motion. You can sit down.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Snyder?
I move to postpone site plan special use 22-026 Angelo Olani with Corridor Cove LLC for Florence Cement. Vacant parcel number 23-07-14-100-062, located south side of 24 Mile Road, east of Shelby Parkway. Proposed cement batch plant with outdoor storage based on giving the applicant an opportunity to address all the planning commission, department, and engineer's comments.
Support.
Moved by Snyder, support by Loray. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Loray?
Yes.
Commissioner Appone?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Chair of the Chats. Okay, see you next time. Next item is site plan special land use number 22-44 for Nicholas Donafrio, Grand Sacra Acquisitions LLC for a Shelby self-storage. This is a public hearing, so I'll ask the petitioner to, petitioner, the Secretary to read the notices published.
Charter Township of Shelby, notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the planning commission for the Charter Township of Shelby, Macomb County, Michigan, has received a request for approval of the following site plan special land use. Applicant Nicholas Donafrio, Grand Sacra Acquisitions LLC, 28470, 13 Mile Road, Suite 220, Farmington Hills, Michigan, 48334. Proposed use: climate-controlled self-storage facility with outdoor recreational vehicle storage. Location: 50435 Van Dyke Avenue, south of 23 Mile Road, west side of Van Dyke Avenue. Site plan SLU-22-44, Sidwell number is 23-07-21-276-001. Legal description is as follows. The planning commission will meet on Monday, February 13th, 2023, at 7:00 PM in the Shelby Municipal Building, 52700 Van Dyke, Shelby Township, Michigan, 5867267243, for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the site plan special land use. The application for the site plan special land use may be examined at the Planning and Zoning Department in the municipal building Monday through Friday from May 30 AM to 5:00 PM. Written comments may be submitted to the planning commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act 110 of 2006 as amended. Shelby Township Planning Commission, Jerome Moffett, Chair, Raquel Moore, Secretary. This was published in the Shelby Utica News on January 25th, 2023. There were 53 property owners and two applicants were notified by first-class mail on January 24th, 2023.
Thank you. Mr. Kirk, did the publication meet all legal requirements?
Yes, it did.
Okay. Can you, again, can you explain the present zoning and if this special land use is appropriate?
Present zoning, again, like the other one, is a light manufacturing district. For these types of uses, light manufacturing, not many external effects coming from these facilities. However, they're asking for outdoor storage, and that triggers a special land use, which is allowed under the ordinance with a special land use.
Great, thank you. Did we receive any correspondence?
No, we did not, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. So like the previous requests, the, the format will be as follows. The petitioner or representative will come up, state what they're requesting and the reasons for it. We'll then bring it to the board, ask any questions or offer their comments. I'll then allow the public to come up, ask questions, offer their comments, and then we'll bring the petitioner back up to, to address whatever else is raised. With that, is the petitioner or representative here? Aim address, and make sure you sign in after, or Julie yells at me.
Good evening, everyone. Eric Lord with Atwell, 12745 23 Mile, Shelby Township. I do have a brief presentation, if it's appropriate to go through that right now?
It's your time.
Okay. Hopefully, everyone can, can see that on their screens. So our proposal tonight is for a climate-controlled self-storage building at 50435 Van Dyke. As mentioned, this is a LM zoning currently. Site plan is a, or the use here is a permitted use under the LM zoning, but our proposal for outdoor storage requires special land use. Just a quick introduction of our team. So Grand Sacra is a developer of the project. Groundwork is the architect. David Whitmire is here with us tonight, all the way from Chicago. Groundwork specializes in these types of climate-controlled storage buildings. Eric Lord, myself, with Atwell, the civil engineers on the project, and Rick Sable is our legal counsel. So the project area is a little under four acres, currently vacant property, again, zoned LM. Principal use for self-storage, outside storage is special land use. Our adjacent property to the north is Gentilly, I believe is pronounced, Collision, which is C4 zoning, which was actually approved as a, as part of a consent judgment. So it's C4 zoning with actually an industrial use, you know, for the, for the collision shop there. To our south is Compass Self-Storage, which is more of your traditional self-storage, not the humidity and climate control that we're, we're offering here. And then to the west is Ford Field Park. So our proposed project, our building is proposed to be set over 100 feet from Van Dyke, which, I'll show you the site plan in a minute, but it's farther than our neighbors, particularly to the north, much farther. We're about 500 feet, the building's about 500 feet from our rear property line, from the park, so we've got a significant amount of area there for our detention basin, landscaping, screening, lots of opportunity there. And our covered parking is over 150 feet from our rear property line. Quick project highlights, so we've got, our proposal includes two 55,000 plus or minus square foot, climate-controlled buildings, each three stories high, modern durable architectural material. These are, again, climate-controlled, humidity-controlled, which I'll get into in a minute, but insulated buildings, very important part of a whole building system that's, that's proposed here. And it's a particular system that's not offered in Shelby Township right now. They have one or maybe a couple in Macomb Township, but nothing in Shelby yet, so it's unique to the township, to my knowledge. And the same with the covered storage parking that we're offering here, unique to the township. Very low traffic generator. We do, we do, we did provide a traffic memo from our traffic consultant. The trip generation for this type of use is very low. We're talking six vehicles per hour in and out, so very minor impact to the, to the road network. And again, opportunity for us to provide enhanced landscaping to, to the park, to our west. So this particular project is going to require a couple of variances, which we are requesting. Parking being one. The ordinance requires 13 spaces. We're providing nine, which is more than enough for what this particular type of use needs. Again, this is self-storage, I'll show you in a minute, you know, the loading and unloading occurs inside of the building. So there's ample, you know, vehicle circulation that occurs inside of the building. The parking is really just for leasing. And, you know, we don't rent out storage boxes and U-Haul trucks and things like that. This is just for the operation of the building itself, and nine is, is more, nine spaces is more than what we need. The ordinance requires a maximum of 35 feet on the building height. We're requesting another three and a half feet to get to 38 and a half feet, which would allow us the three stories that we'd like to provide for this building. And our, the vehicle storage that we have, I'll show you some pictures of what the vehicle storage looks like. That has a height of 20 feet. The ordinance right now is a little bit silent to this type of use. They call it a carport, and it has a maximum height of 14 feet for a carport, although I'm not quite sure if that applies to this type of storage use, but it's the closest that we could find, so we're assuming a variance would be required for, for that. And then, side yard setback. The, the ordinance requires a 50-foot setback from our north property line due to the fact that it's a non-manufactured zoning, even though the use, again, that it's a non-manufactured zoning, even though the use, again, was part of a consent judgment, and in effect, the use is actually that. But nonetheless, per the ordinance, letter of the law, we would need a variance there. We're proposing 29 feet building setback from our property line compared to the 50 that the ordinance would, would require. So just a quick, a couple of quick things regarding climate control and humidity-controlled storage that we're offering. These type of units are typically, they're heated, they're ventilated, they have high-tech HVAC systems with commercial-grade humidifiers that control the temperature and humidity throughout each unit. Units are kept between 55 and 80 degrees, about 50 to 55% humidity consistently. And the, you know, dehumidifiers are there pulling excess moisture from the air. It's really, really important for our type of climate that experiences fluctuations in temperatures, seasons that we have, you know, so the type of storage that you're going to allow and provide here is, you know, furniture, electronics, artwork, photographs, instruments, things that temperature and humidity are, can be really detrimental to. And again, it's different than your traditional storage that you have in the township, which is more of your roll-up doors, you know, maybe some temperature control, but it's the humidity that really separates this particular use. So, you know, when we talk about special land uses, you know, you look at the ordinance and some of the things it requires is, you know, are we compatible with our surrounding area? So I thought it would be important to highlight what our surrounding area looks like, how we fit into it, how our project, we feel, will enhance our surrounding area. So you can see our subject property there in the middle, again, vacant piece of property, Gentili's Collision to the north, Compass Self-Storage to the south, and then Ford Field Park is over, over to our west. Quick aerial view, looking west, so you can see, you know, Gentili's Collision is really right up, the building is right up against the sidewalk there, right up against the right-of-way. Our building's going to be set back, again, quite a distance from the right-of-way, so that's, we feel is going to be a real improvement to that, that area, that corridor. Again, another look at the collision shop there, you can see the building, the smoke stacks, again, just, just trying to represent the area that we've got in our, in our surroundings here. To our south, you could see Compass Self-Storage. You know, the, their building is set back similar to where we would be, so you can kind of see the comparison between where Compass Self-Storage is and where Gentili's Collision is right there, so our building will be set back much, much farther. That, that self-storage building, our neighbor to the south, offers, you know, van rentals, you know, storage box rentals, things like that, that we're not looking to offer, we're not going to offer as part of our use. This is a view from the south, if you were kind of hovering over Ford Field Park, looking sort of northeast. There's that, I think it's kind of a multi-use building facility there, adjacent to the north to us there. You can kind of see what, what that looks like. This is a view if you were on the drive in the park, just, just to the west of our property line. So you can kind of see that view, you see that, you know, the fences there, it's sort of falling apart a little bit, and then if you were to turn around and look south, that's actually towards our property right now, so again, part of our project is to be, is to enhance that. We'll upgrade that fence, there'll be significant landscaping. It's going to look a lot nicer than the condition that it's in right now. Just a few examples of what these climate-controlled storage buildings look like. This is one actually in Macomb Township that you, you may have seen over on Hayes near 22. So this is, you know, very compatible and typical to what you see for these type of climate-controlled units. Another example here, just so you kind of get a flavor of, of how these things look. And then regarding, you know, outdoor storage, RV parking, outdoor storage, this is actually shots of what exists currently in the township. One picture's on 23 Mile, sort of across from the Amazon facility, there's a storage area there, and then another one's over on, on 24. So clearly, what we're looking to do is provide a little more controlled and structured situation here for this, for this type of use. What we have is, again, you, you drive in and you load and you unload interior to the building for these type of units, and so this is what the interior looks like when you drive in. So you drive in, you know, doors open, doors close on either side of you, you're, you know, controlled environment. Elevators would take you up to wherever your particular storage unit would be. Very controlled, very nice for our customers to load, unload, come in and out of. And these are the type of structures that we're looking at for the storage. The picture on the upper right is actually a, a, a facility over in Clinton Township, and that's exactly the type of unit, exactly the type of manufacturer that we would, we would look towards for this, this project. Real briefly, bring up our site plan. Okay. Okay. So, again, you can see our building layout here, obviously entrance onto Van Dyke. Customers would be able to come in the drive and fully circulate around the building. The drive-through is right in the middle of the building, you know, vehicles come in, doors open, unload, unload, you know, load, unload, and then come out and then return the opposite way, so full circulation around the building as far as access to the storage units. And then we would be, we would have gates on either side for access to the rear covered storage in the back. And then, you know, dimensionally, again, as I mentioned, so here's our rear property line, here's the Ford Field Park Drive to our west, and you could see, you know, we've got our detention basin proposed, which would be fully landscaped around. It's about 130 feet from the pavement area to our rear property line, about 160 feet to where the first parking stall would be, and then a little over 500 feet, 535 feet from the building to our rear property line. So we've got a pretty significant distance there from the park, which we felt, we feel it's important to try to provide some screening, and I'm interested to hear everyone's thoughts on that, from the park, but really just wanted to provide some pictures to kind of show you guys the area that we're fitting into, how we think our development, our building is going to really fit and actually enhance the area. And that's really it. I just hope that's helpful. Our whole development team here is happy to answer any questions that you guys have.
Great, thank you. I've got a few. I guess, in terms of the use in both, both, you know, the, the, the storage, I mean, I think it, it seems to be well done, and, and it kind of fits. And then the, the, we do have a couple of indoor storage facilities.
The climate control and humidity control?
Yeah. I don't know, I don't know about the humidity control, but I'm assuming if they did it, they would, but whatever. Not, definitely not to this scale. But this is, this is, this is used in pretty much every square inch of this four-acre parcel, which is a little, it raises a couple of flags. A 21-foot setback on the north side seems a bit excessive, like as we, because we're putting, there are no three-story buildings on Van Dyke within a good stretch of that, okay? So these are, these will be significant buildings together. I mean, it's really kind of one building that's attached by, you know, a little drive-through garage, so we're talking, you know, and it's, you say it's set back, it's set back a little bit, but it's still, it's still pretty much right on Van Dyke, so. And part, one of the concerns I have is, there are 800, what, 800 units, I think I saw, within, 800 storage units within these two facilities, correct?
Is that all right, David?
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, again, I don't know, I don't know the business, but if you've got 800 car, 800 or more folks wanting to access their stuff, and frankly, the only place they're going to be able to park is a 80 or 100-foot by 20-foot little str, you know, two, you know, a two-lane road within, inside the building, what happens if there's overflow? And now, now we've, we've, we've cut the, you know, where they're becoming in on the north, where, you know, we've reduced the setback, so that's, it's, you know, it's going to be shorter. You know, what happens if that nuisance is, you know, if, if more people, especially in a, in a, in a day and age? And again, I'm just kind of, you help me through this, all right?
Sure, yeah.
In a, in a work-from-home sort of environment that doesn't seem to be going away, where these kinds of facilities is sort of like an extension of an office, you know, that they'll need storage space, potentially would need more access to it, where, what happens to overflow, overflow parking in that? And how many, and if someone could tell me, how many within that, within that, that little piece between those two buildings, how many cars can fit in there and can navigate, you know, around each other, you know, reasonably?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, you're talking, it's almost 100 feet long, right? So you figure, you know, if a parking space is 20 feet, you know, you're talking.
So five on each side?
At least, you know?
So 10 cars?
Yeah.
Eight cars?
Yeah.
Because you're, you're not going to get all, if you fit, if you put 10 cars in, you've now filled up that entire area, and so that's not going to happen, so maybe six cars? Because, you know, folks are going to want to get around?
Yeah.
Chairman, could I address that a little bit?
Sure. Name an address, please.
Richard Sable, 38600 Van Dyke, Sterling Heights, Michigan. On the traffic situation, I anticipated that you might be asking that question. Kind of important when you drive through, and I looked at a couple of these sites, one in, off of LaPierre Road, another one in Sterling Heights, is the size of this interior here is designed to where you can have two cars that pull in, so it's not like you have an individual car that pulls into this, into this building here, and now it's stacked up and they're going to stack up outside. It's wide enough and accommodates two cars. Then what we did was also commissioned a traffic study, and, and I know that Eric Lord mentioned that, but the traffic study done by Fleis and Vanderbrink specifically said that, overall, the trips generated by this site are negligible, and the addition of, of additional units, meaning the third floor to the building, will not impact the adjacent street traffic operations or the operations of this site. So we anticipated and did a full study analysis. Now, the architect is here who designs a number of these around the country, and he's more familiar with what happens with the situation with the traffic conditions there, but this is what I saw from driving around this weekend and looking at this site, these sites. And what you find is with these sites is that you don't have this outside parking, people are pulling in, you know, to these buildings, and you have plenty of wide space for additional cars. The front parking, where we're looking to seek a variance from 13 units to nine units, is really designed because that front office area is really just for administrative staff coming in or something, coming in to do a lease, but it's not for people that are storing their vehicles, like what you have with the adjacent Compass Self-Storage over there. So it's a little bit different, and I'd like to have the architect be able to address any questions that you might have with regard to the particular design.
All right, so, again, just to reiterate, and I, I'm just trying to figure, because this isn't, you know, I have no expertise in this, you know?
Sure.
This is a relatively new, although they're, you know, repurposed Kmart, you know, they're trying to do stuff like this.
Right.
But it's 120,000 square feet, it's 800 units.
Right.
And you're telling me that maybe, you know, a maximum, you get 10 cars in there, but you couldn't because they need to get, navigate around each other. In a 20, in a 20-by-100-foot space, that's where all the folks that are going to access that, 120,000 feet, 800 units, six to eight cars at maximum, I don't know. Again, convinced me that that, that, that seems a little light, and the problem is, because there's so much in this, there's no, okay, if we get this wrong, you know, then there's no place, then it creates a nuisance, then folks are going to be parked in, you know?
Understood.
All right, so that's why.
That's why we sought to address it and get a study done.
Yeah, I think that the.
So, so the traffic study, okay. Is this a traffic study guy, or is this a guy with an intimate, now, this, this business?
With regard to this business.
Yeah, and if I could speak to that.
Sure.
So, I think that the, the difference here is just, it's the, it's the traffic that's generated once the use is up and running. You know, there's, there's only, like, in the peak hour, in the PM peak hour, it's like six trips in, six trips out. There's not a lot of turnover at these facilities. You come in, you, you store your goods, and it's not like you're coming on a regular basis that, you know, so it's, it's, it's not a big traffic generator in that regard. And these things are a little bit newer to the township, to our area, but they've been going on a lot throughout the country, and to the point where the ITE manual, which is the manual that traffic consultants use to establish how many trips based on certain uses, they have this specific use in the IT, in the latest ITE manual, which is what our traffic consultant used to figure out how many vehicles, based on this square footage, this number of units would be generated. And that's when they came up with what they have. It's just, it's just the turnover, there's not a lot of vehicles that come and visit their furniture on a regular basis, you know?
Do you, do you limit what, what's allowed to be stored in these?
Yes. David, you can speak to that, yeah.
Good evening. My name's David Whitmire, I'm with Groundwork Architects. My address is 351 West Dundee Road, Buffalo Grove, Illinois. I've been working in the self-storage field for 25 years now, and designed many for, over the, over this time. I can answer any specific questions you've got. The, and actually, I just forgot what the question was.
Was, was limitations on what, what's allowed to be stored in?
Yes. When, when people come in and rent this, there will be a lease that gets signed, that no explosives, no flammable materials, things like that. Eric had previously listed the typical household items and things like that. Generally, you're going to have people who are emptying out their garage of furniture, toys, Christmas decorations, or holiday decorations. These days, every holiday, I mean, I'm, I'm waiting for all the Valentine's Day decorations to be on the front lawns, there are some people that rent these things. Every holiday that comes in, they take out, down their Halloween decorations, bring out their Thanksgiving decorations, and they will store clothes, seasonal things, sometimes they will store their lawn furniture, things like that. Sports supplies in the winter, they'll, their baseball bats and things like that.
How big are these units?
The units range in size, generally, the smallest are going to be five by five, which is not much larger than a closet, largest would be 10 by 30, and those, that's 300 square feet, that people will, it may be a company that is storing old files, so they'll bring in racks and things like that.
Or inventory in a retail, or some sort of, or some sort of inventory?
Yeah, it, it, it all varies with, with what people want, but, but there are certain, it's listed as moderate, moderate hazard storage in the building code, so, and it's not high hazard, so the things that would become high hazard.
That's, that's somebody else's worry. I'm more worried about how frequently are people going to want to access this stuff. Like, do you see an environment where this could, I, could, could, could increase? And so.
Right.
Just want to make sure that we've, that we've, we've anticipated this.
Yes.
Because the last thing, you know, because like, this stuff pisses me off if I'm driving down Van Dyke and I see cars parked all the, you know, pulling up and stacked to try to get into a spot where, you know?
Correct.
We could have, we should have anticipated, because these are big, these are, these are big facilities for a small space that doesn't have a lot of room for overflow, so we're sort of on coming, okay, if we screw up, you know, it's, it's harder to figure out, okay, what's, what's the solution going to be? You know, because we've got, we've got places that, that are underparked, and it's, it creates a hazard within the township. And, and, and because it's a new use, and where it's at in the township, and the size of the lot, I think they're, they're reasonable questions. So the 20, 21, and I don't want to, I tend, sometimes I dominate this stuff too much, and I apologize to my colleagues, but, so the 21-foot setback, 21-foot variance you want on this, what, oh, you want, it's 29, but you want a 21-foot.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, there, there, that's, all right, we understand the Gentili, that facility has been there a long time, and, and, but we also have to anticipate, because frankly, once your buildings are built, they're likely not going to go anywhere, okay? That, what happens if that gets repurposed? And so to, to, you know, is that now going to impact to allow that significant of a, of a, of a variance? I don't, you know, I'm, 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 again, this is something I need to get my handle on why, or if you're going to do it, then adjust it to, you know, to this, to move it more towards the south, because I believe, I believe they can. It's, again, big building that's getting jammed onto, and so to want more room to jam a big building onto a smaller piece of property, especially, you know, right there on Van Dyke, right down there with the township that, you know, I think previous planning departments, you know, planning boards, you know, may have like, not done the best service to, and so when there is stuff to get, you know, we just want to make sure this is done right.
As mentioned, the idea for the side yard setback is to center the building on a lot. That was the idea for asking for that setback. It allows us to center the building, you know? It allows us to center the building, you know, in that lot.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, to expand on that, I mean, we could, with the dimensions we have, push the building to five feet off the property line on the south side and still meet the ordinance requirements, and thereby getting the separation from the north property line that we have. But this just seemed to function better, made more sense to us, so.
Can I also interject too?
Yeah.
Part of, most of the vehicles that are going to be used in this facility are going to be residential-type vehicles, either a car, an SUV, or a van. You know, pickup trucks, or a blazer, or something like that. But what we also find with these facilities is that people will go to a Home Depot, or Hertz Penske, or U-Haul, rent a moving van to say, "My son is coming back from college, he's got all his furniture, we need to store it for the summer. We're coming in, we're renting a van, we're coming in." So these drive aisles, generally, you're figuring with two-way traffic, you've got 24 feet wide drive aisles. Here, these drive aisles are 24, 25 feet wide, both coming in, surrounding the entire building. And I always like to say that these are amateur truck drivers, where you want to give them as much room as you can. So both coming in, the turning radius as they're coming in into the drive through, being able to square up, you know, so they go through the entrance straight, and then they can also exit, and then also when they're leaving, they can turn out and turn out around. That ability to have the 29 feet both on the north and the south gives some grass area, gives enough room for those drive aisles to come through, gives people the ability to maneuver a lot easier around that. But the other thing as well is that if someone were to pull off to the side, there's plenty of room for anyone to bypass. And so that also allows the larger vehicles, like the boats and RVs, that would be stored in the vehicle storage on the west side of the site, that gives them plenty of maneuvering room as well. So to be able to center the building on the site provides a nice wide ingress and also egress as they're coming out. So that drives a lot of that.
Okay, yeah, one last thing before, I'll beg my colleagues to take this away from me. Is the elevations of both the north and south of the building look, what material? I mean, they look really bland, and, you know, we need some sort of, you know, I would anticipate a need for something a little more architecturally pleasing, especially given the fact that these are going to be significantly taller than both of their neighboring buildings. And that's what people are going to see, less so the east elevation.
Right, the, well, the material is insulated metal panel, which, in order to create a tight building envelope to meet energy codes and keep the interior environment stable, is, it's going to be a two and a half or three-inch solid panel that goes all the way around. It's a metal panel that has a textured finish, stucco-like finish on the exterior of it. But part of what we did there is, the building sits far enough back from the street, the auto repair shop to the north of us is only probably about, at the rear portion of their site. I mean, the site that is in basically the front yard is low, but as it goes back, it's up higher. So that portion of the building is, we're only, not even a dozen feet taller than that. It's also, at those points, the building is about 350 feet deep. So most of what you see is going to be blocked by the buildings at either side. Yes, it's going to stand up above, but it's farther back. What we had done was put the, take the front, wrap the building materials, the brick, around both the north and the south sides, so that we create kind of tower elements at each of those corners. And then the rest of the area becomes nondescript. We use color for the front portion. The back portion is a deeper color to separate the two, because oftentimes with these buildings, they end up being large. So part of my job is to be able to break down the mass of these things. And when we start putting more detail in them, I found that as, the less you draw attention to it, the less they get noticed for the, you know, as you're going through, a lot of this stuff is in the background. And once you start ornamenting it, it draws the attention as opposed to just, most people, as you drive through, you're looking, my wife always complains because I don't notice anything on either side of me, because I'm like, I'm watching the road. But as you look to the side, you're generally seeing the front elevations of these. And so that's where we made most of our focus on that building. And as, and for the most part, the only folks who are going to be really seeing those sides are the people who are going to be driving around and through the back, and they're tight enough where it didn't seem to make much of an impact.
That's an argument, but I guess I may, I sort of beg to differ, because I think it's, you may say it's setback farther, but it's, you know, 100 foot, 100, what is it, 50 foot?
I think I'd like to emphasize that we're open to-
Yeah, a second, I'm talking.
What I'd like to do is emphasize that we're open to suggestions and input from-
I was talking.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So.
Okay. Go ahead.
All right. So it's 100, what's the setback, 100 from Van Dyke, 150?
Sorry. So we'll need the distance, the measurement from the center line of the road.
All right. So, you can make the argument that it's setback farther, but, I mean, effectively, I don't think it is. Again, I guess I would disagree. And so, as folks are driving north and south on Van Dyke, they're going to see a gray wall, a large gray, flat gray wall. And I, you know, I just, I don't, you know, I have an issue. So, yes, Mr. Sable?
Okay, sorry for that.
You're now acknowledged, you're recognized to speak.
Thank you. The idea is, we're looking for some input. We have plenty of flexibility on the north side and south side of the building. There's a lot of different architectural features that we can provide to the north and south, not just some bland, dull gray, you know, steel, you know, sides. And I think that's what your comments are about. And our architect here has a number of options. Just like when I drove and looked at some of these other facilities, they have, you know, brick on the bottom floor, they have some nice architectural features with some different colors that we can work out with the planning department. So the idea is not to look at that steel. I think there's one picture in there that looks like a gray steel in there. That's not what we're looking to do.
Okay.
We're looking for some input from planning department as to what they would prefer in. And Dave can provide you with a number of options, you know, that what we can do there. So we understand, you know, how important that is to the township. Want to let you know that.
Again, and I know you're well aware about how the sausage is made, so this, you know, it may not be pretty, but, you know, we'll get there.
Okay.
But, which our requesting is site plan approval, and so it is appropriate that we kind of hammer, at least get an acknowledgement of where this is going, or, you know, in that process, so. Okay, thank you. To the board, any questions or comments from?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Question or more?
I concur with you as well. The, I feel the building itself dwarfs the lot, and it just aesthetically isn't very pleasing. As far as I picture driving down Van Dyke, I just, it just seems like a monster on the lot itself. As far as the building materials on the elevations, I have problems with that as well. And then I have a question for you. The buffer in the back to the west, abutting that Ford Field, what are you proposing to do back there?
So, we will, we're going to replace that fence along our right of way of Ford Field Park. I think if you saw the picture that I had, it's like a chain-link fence kind of fallen over right now. So we're going to fix that, enhance that, add landscaping to it from our, that property line into our property. So we're going to landscape that up. We will have our detention basin right there. And then there'll be opportunity to landscape on the, yeah, the other side of the detention basin as well. So as you're walking along that path along the park, our intention is to screen that so that you're not seeing, you know, the outdoor storage or anything there, so. And again, I think it's going to greatly enhance what you see now when you walk down that trail.
That was my concern, you know, would you be able to see the outdoor storage, the RVs?
Yeah. Our, well, so the path is really close to the property line. So from a perspective of, you know, if you put, you put like an opaque fence along that property line, you're, you know, because of your proximity to that property line, again, it's like, I can show you the picture again, but it's right on that property line. So our ability to screen that so that you're not going to see it is good. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, thank you. This is the only public hearing. The planning commissioner will hold on this special land use request. All remarks will be entered into the record for Township Board Evaluation. We are recommending body, and ultimately, the Township Board will make the final decision on this request. At this point, anyone in the audience is free to offer a comment or ask questions. You just need to name an address, and when you're done, to sign in. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman, Board. Eric Lundgren, District Manager for Compass Self Storage, 6437 Woodside Court, Belleville, Michigan. Currently, obviously, we're the neighbor to the south. Half mile from us is extra space storage. On 23 Mile is clear home storage. So there's more than enough storage facilities in that mile radius. One, there's storage units available at all three locations. Two, ourselves, Compass Self Storage and Clear Home, both offer RV parking and climate-controlled units. I think adding another storage facility would just be an oversaturation of the market. At Compass, we offer both climate-controlled and drive-up accessible units. And there's not really a large tax base, because we have skeleton staff, so we only have two employees per property, and that's what, typically, that's what's in the industry. So those are my comments.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, yeah, make sure you sign it. But let me just tell you, so, we can't tell somebody what to do, what to build on their property, you know, as long as it's within, what the zoning is, it fits within the zoning, it's an allowable use, and it, you know, it's done within, you know, the scope, but.
I understand that. I'm just saying, isn't there another business that might be more beneficial to the community or that street?
Absolutely, but, again, I don't own the property, and, you know, I'm not, you know, we're not, you know, the township isn't in the position to develop something. That's not what we do. But they, you know, if you want to talk to them afterwards, you know.
Okay, thank you.
They'll give you a deal. Sir, would you like to comment?
Martin Johnson, 8791 Millis Road, Shelby Township. I'm representing Shelby Gardens, which is two doors down from this proposed area. Can I ask them questions?
Ask me, and then I'll ask them.
The peak traffic hours, when people go to storage, usually it's on weekends. That's when our busiest time is. You were concerned about the traffic flow. And when we have events, we get a lot of traffic flow all at once, and that could be a concern for me. So I want to know, when do they expect their peak traffic flow? Also, I would agree with you that building's going to be a monster. Two doors down from us, site for people seeing us, brides coming in, don't want to see this monster building. And also, as far as the outside storage, two concerns there. One is, will we be able to see the RVs from our facility? And also, do these things, from my understanding, I don't own an RV, but my son and my in-laws do, there's a lot of rodents associated with outside RV storage. That's my comment.
Okay, thank you. I don't see anyone else. Who we got? Planner, Julie, do you have some comments?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. So just a few things that I wanted to mention as well. For the building height, I mean, yes, of course, it doesn't seem like excessive between what's permitted, which would be 35 feet, and they're asking for 38 feet, six inches. So it's just over three feet of what they're asking for as far as going over. But the problem is the two stories. Two stories are permitted, and they're asking for three stories. So this is the situation. And actually, the parapet wall would fall in with what would be approved for that building. You can go up to 15 feet past the district for a parapet wall. So that would be, it's just the two stories and the three-foot variance, a little bit over three feet. As far as the side yard setback variance of 21 feet, when we maximize the side yard setback variance, then we're encroaching into the maximum lot coverage as well. So that's one aspect that's going to have to be addressed as well. The parking variance, I think we touched on that. The building elevations, I think we addressed. I believe we do need to see some sort of architectural details on the north and south side of the buildings to give it some dimensions perhaps, or some architectural features, because it does look like a long blank wall. The carports, we recently approved an outdoor storage facility that proposed carports as well, and they kept within that 14-foot requirement. So this is what we're going to base our requirement on. And if you're going in front of the Zoning Board of Appeals, I actually don't see much of an issue with the carports being increased by six feet, because you do have that landscaper, and it's going to be behind the building as well. So if you have a building that's 35 feet or 38 feet, I mean, the 20-foot carports are really not going to make much of a difference, especially with them being screened to the west with that detention pond and landscaping. For the front yard setback, I would like the plans to reflect the setback requirement from the center line of the road instead of the property line, because like I mentioned, that property line is, it does not look like that portion of the property is designated to the Macomb County Department of Roads. So we can't include a portion that's probably going to be designated to the Macomb County Department of Roads. And the Macomb County Department of Roads comment was to line up the driveway with the entrance to the east. So I think with lining up the driveway might change the configuration of the site based on the Macomb County Department of Roads' request.
Thank you. To the petitioner, if you want to come back up. Traffic, I know you addressed that, but I want you to kind of sort of restate. So was six, maximum of six cars at the peak time per hour?
Yes.
If I remember this, you should remember this.
So, yeah, so in the PM peak hour, there would be six vehicles in and six vehicles out, for a total of 12. And then, that's in the PM peak hour. In the AM, it's less, it's five in and three out, so eight.
Weekend, that's, was there a?
No, there wouldn't be a, well, I guess I'll defer, I don't know, David, if you are familiar with any sort of spikes on weekend usage, but to my knowledge, these are the-
Sure, your traffic engineer just said, what, on an average day, this is what the peak is?
Well, no, so the ITE manual takes the peak, the peak use generated from the facility. And so when you apply that to the square footage, that's where you come up with 12. 12 is the peak, six in, six out.
So the square footage of the building, not the number of units in the building?
It's, yes, it's based on basically the gross leasable area. So you add up all the leasable area.
That doesn't make many happier. Because, I mean, you could use, that could be, that could be four, that could be, you know, four individual. You know, it could be a smaller number, because these are a lot, you have a high density of smaller spaces, which, all right, we'll get to that, I'm not going to.
I think there's, that is a common scrap.
We're not going to solve that issue, but I need to figure that one out. Okay, and then screening of RVs from the south? We haven't seen any, are you proposing anything?
Not from the south. I mean, the screening we were talking about is from the park, from, to the west.
Yeah, okay, so there would be, no?
Yeah.
But, I mean, they're going to be covered. And then in terms of rodents, you know, do you have any expertise on rodents in RVs?
I'm sorry?
Rodents in RVs?
I can't give you any honest data on rodents with RVs, no.
Okay.
Oh, sure.
Sure.
Three things. One that the-
You do the microphone, please.
I'm sorry. One thing the planner mentioned, with the 14-foot height of the vehicle storage stuff, there are some RVs that are 14-foot high. So that's part of the reason why we want to get the clearance, and we've got it a little bit up. So that's just something to keep in mind with that.
She said kind of somewhat, so she said, so she was somewhat favorable on that, so I quit while I was ahead, so.
I just, providing some anecdotal reasons why she supports it. In terms of the overflow, there, you're right. On weekends, when it's starting up, there can be, you know, more than six cars- can be, you know, more than, uh, six cars in there. It is possible, it's, we're not saying it can't be possible. One thing, and one of the concerns you have is with that level of overflow. We had designed the facility so that all the loading was going to occur through the drive-through. Uh, the interior of the buildings are all hallways, and like I said, we've got, uh, room up in the front, uh, we've got the parking spaces that, you know, from our standpoint, we would only expect about two of those three, two or three of those spaces ever to be used. And we did not put any entrances up on the front, because we didn't wanna invite people loading up from the front. But there's certainly no reason that we can't put a overflow entrance up at the front or at the back that would allow, in case there was, uh, crowds with that, there is room there for, with the drive aisles and the parking spaces, with the parking spaces up in the front and the drive aisle space in the back, there's plenty of room to be able to put a door over there. So, in case somebody wanted to come in and there was, there was anything jammed up, that can be provided.
Great. The great, the great thing about sitting here is I can just tell you what I think the problem is, and it's on you to figure out the solution. I'm not gonna do that for you. Yes?
Well, I'll say the, the other thing, too, is just, um, I, I know it may be a little bit, this use may be a little bit unfamiliar, but it's not, not too far away, you've got good examples, you know, over in, um, Macomb, um, and you can see how their facility's laid out. It's very similar, drive-in type operation, um, if that gives you some just comfort level to take a look at. And you'll, I mean, you'll find it's similar to what we have.
Okay. All right, thank you. Uh, if there are no other questions, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Still move.
Support.
Moved and supported.
Aye.
All in favor? Well, you're the only vote that matters, so, we know. All right. Uh, so, our recommendation this evening may be based, must be based on the following standards: compatibility with adjacent land uses, consistent with and promote the intent and purpose of the special land use, compatibility with the natural environment, consistent with capacities of public services and facilities affected by the proposed use, protect the public health, safety, and welfare, and adequacy of public access to the site. We may recommend approval. We may disapprove of the request, uh, or recommend that we table it to evaluate the information further. I will now entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Moore.
I move to postpone site plan, special land use 22-44 for Nicholas Donofrio, Grand Saquah Acquisitions LLC for a climate-controlled self-storage facility and an outdoor-covered RV storage, 50435 Van Dyke, parcel number 23-07-21-276-001, located on the west side of Van Dyke, between 22 Mile Road and 23 Mile Road, in order to give the applicant an opportunity to address all planning commission, site plan, and engineering review comments.
Is there support?
Support.
Moved by Moore, support by Snyder. Any questions on the motion? Hearing done. Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.